Good evening. Tonight's meeting for October 5th, 2020 is consistent with terms of Governor Holcomb's Executive Order 2014, allowing council members to participate remotely. During tonight's meeting, members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting, with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate time in the meeting, the council president will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing his or her comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. Thank you for your cooperation. With a regular order, a meeting of Mishawaka Council for October 5th, 2020, please come to order. Please place all electronic devices on mute, remove your hat, and would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And please remain standing for a moment of silence to send up warm thoughts and prayers for the millions of lives affected by violence, abduction, and COVID-19, including President Trump and his family and staff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Through the minutes of regular meetings of September 21st, 2020, are there any additions or corrections? If not, they will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials?
Yes, Mr. President, we have petition number 2020-07. This is a PUD amendment to allow an elevated water storage system tank not to exceed 150 feet in height. This is signed by Ken Prince, City Planner.
Thank you. Reports of special committees, seeing none. Ordinances on first reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance 2020-35. This is an elected official salary ordinance for 2021.
Thank you. I'll assign that to Budget and Finance Committee.
We have proposed ordinance number 2020-36. This is a transfer of funds for the Public Safety of Lloyd Fund. This is for $235,010. I'm sorry. And 10.
Thank you very much. I will assign that to the Budget and Finance Committee also. And resolutions.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 3602 Grape Road, Suite 11. This is a use allowance to allow microblading inside the existing root salon.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on Resolution R. 2020-20. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 2020-20, would you please come forward, give your name and address for the record?
My name is Vittoria Giannetto. I'm on the webcam, and my address is 51633 Trailwood Court, Granger, Indiana, and I am speaking in favor of this resolution of microblading services being added to the current salon off of Grape Road.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Giannetto. If you could just explain a little bit about the process where you'd be administering the treatment, et cetera?
Correct, yes. Microblading is just a form of semi-permanent cosmetics. It's essentially, I guess you can say, a tattoo, but it's not permanent. I'm only going into the first layer of the skin, and it's just, it's more of a beauty service for women and typically men who have lost hair due to cancer on their eyebrows, people who have lost hair through medication or just aging, and it's just really to visually enhance face. So I will be administering that. I have been through certification and just would like to start my business.
Well, thank you very, very much. Any questions, Mrs. Giannetto? Yes, Mrs. DeMay.
I just have a couple of questions. Do you offer, what is your pre-procedure instructions to your clients?
Usually, pre-procedure is typically no Botox, no suntanning. I typically give an email out if they have any autoimmune disorders, such as lupus or cancer, pretty much just anything that will affect, hold pigment in your skin, such as a sunburn, or just medications, pretty much, and always obviously keeping the skin clean, no damage, no scars, no birthmarks. And then typically, my review of the skin is when they come in, I typically give a free consultation. We look at the skin, we make sure that there is, you know, no signs of large pores. There's all kinds of just different variations before we start, but typically it's medications and any disorders they might have.
Okay. And your clients do sign a waiver before the?
Correct, yes. They sign waivers that list their medications, anything that they might be on for any reason, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. DeMay, any other questions for Mrs. Giannetto? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 2020-20 that is remotely? Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak in favor of this resolution? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Resolution 2020-20 in the council chambers? Anyone participating remotely wish to speak in opposition to Resolution 2020-20? Are there any council members wishing to speak? A call for the question. Madam Clerk, will you please pull the console?
Yes. Mrs. DeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki is a yes as well.
I'm sorry, resolution.
Best of luck to you, Mrs. Giannetto.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ron Benicki is now on the line.
Mr. Okay. Thank you. Raven, did you hear that?
Yes.
Ordinances on second reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance number 2020-30, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Monotipo Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka. This is an ordinance rezone from C1 General Commercial District to C4 Auto-Oriented Commercial for an auto sales at 4421 North Grape Road.
Thank you. May I have the committee report, please? Committee report, please.
For 29?
30.
For 30.
I don't have it. I have 34.
It's a land use.
Land use?
Should be Woody or Belovich.
Woody, I gave you two.
Woody, I think you had two, didn't you?
I did. I have one. I have budget. I give one of them.
You should have the land use planning.
I have budget finance. No, I have budget and finance.
That's the one they're looking for.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I gave you the other one. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
No problem.
To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2020, I sturdy reported they have examined said matter, and in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the majority of the committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you please pull the console?
Yes. Mrs. DeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes nine to zero.
Thank you. This is the second reading on Proposed Ordinance 2020-30. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Peter J. Augustino, Attorney at Law, 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner and would ask for approval of the ordinance granting the change in zoning from C1 to C4, and would be happy to answer any questions. Also present is Bob Hayden from Jordan Ford, connected to the petitioner.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Augustino. Any questions for Mr. Augustino, Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Augustino. I just, I have a quick question about the site. All right, is the building going to remain?
No, the building is coming down.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Augustino? All right, thank you. Anyone else in the council chambers wishing to speak in favor of Proposed Ordinance 2020-30? Is there anyone participating remotely that would like to speak in favor of Proposed Seeing none? Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak in opposition to Proposed Ordinance Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition that is participating remotely? Seeing none? Any council members wishing to speak? Mrs. Volker.
Thank you, Mr. President, or Mr. Vice President.
You're welcome.
Anyway, I just wanted to thank you for the investment that you're making on Grape Road. I think it's going to be a really great improvement along that corridor and will help kind of redevelopment and redevelop that whole area. So wish you lots of luck, longer than passes, but thank you very much.
Any other council members wishing to speak? Call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, will you please pull the console?
Mrs. DeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
And Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine to zero. We have proposed ordinance 2020-31, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Monotipo Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is for Deer Run Road PUD Amendment to permit I-1 light industrial use on vacant property at the southwest corner of Deer Run Drive from the south leg and Fur Road.
Thank you very much. May I have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President, to the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of Proposed Ordinance number 2020-31, report that they have examined said matter, and if their opinion should be adopted, this is signed by a majority of the committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you please pull the console?
Mrs. DeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
And Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes nine to zero.
This is the second reading on Proposed Ordinance 2020-31. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Terry Lang from Lang Feeney Associates. Our address is 715 South Michigan Street in South Bend. I represent the petitioners here. The petition before you is to take a portion of the PUD and amendments to allow for a product packaging facility to be located there. We've worked closely with the planning department on this and adjusted our petition to meet their desires and will comply with all of the requests that they've had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Any questions for Mr. Lang? I have one quick question regarding, you mentioned product packaging. Will they be making the corrugate, or are they just making boxes? Are they filling volume, liquid, et cetera?
They'll be just the packaging portion of that facility there. So they'll be taking the boxing and packaging the materials.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lang? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in the council chambers in favor of Proposed Ordinance 2020-31? Anyone else participating remotely wish to speak in favor of Proposed Ordinance 2020-31? Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak in opposition to this Proposed Ordinance Seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak remotely in opposition to this Proposed Ordinance? Seeing none? Any council members wishing to speak? Seeing none? I'll call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, will you please pull the console?
Mrs. DeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine to zero. We have proposed ordinance 2020-32, an ordinance annexing the contiguous territory to the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, and providing zoning clarifications, classifications. Therefore, this is for an annexation and rezoning for a proposed multifamily town home development at 15165, 15195, and 15201 Cleveland Road.
Thank you. This is the second reading on Proposed Ordinance 2020-32. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak in favor of this Proposed Ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Evening. Thank you for hearing our proposal. Evening. Mike Huber with Adam Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend. We are basically bringing in the other half of our parcel for our project. Currently, half of it's in the city and zoned R3, and we're petitioning to bring the other half in, keep it R3 zoning. Our proposal is to build about 64 townhomes in there. It's about a $23 million investment in the project. A plea will help fill some of the housing gap that we're having currently, the housing shortage in St. Joe County. It's going to be really nice, high-end development, and we appreciate, again, your consideration for our annexation request and our rezoning.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Huber? I have one. Now, when you mentioned townhomes, those are going to be owner-occupied purchase, not for lease?
That's the, that's the current plan.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Thank you. Mr. Huber, this is more just a question of idle curiosity than anything else, and you may be too new in the process or not far enough along in the process to answer this, but when you refer to it as being high-end housing, what's the price point going to be for these units?
These will probably be $300, $400,000 units each.
Well, that definitely qualifies as high-end in my book. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. Had to get creative with my microphone so he could hear you. Any other questions for Mr. Huber? Thank you very much. Anyone else in the council chambers wishing to speak in favor of Proposed Ordinance 2020-32? Anyone participating remotely wish to speak in favor of Proposed Ordinance 2020-32? Anyone in council chambers wishing to speak in opposition to Proposed Ordinance 2020-32? Anyone participating remotely wish to speak in opposition to Proposed Ordinance 2020-32? Seeing none? I'll ask, any council members wish to speak? This is a vote only, so we will end the public hearing.
No.
Yeah, no vote, I'm sorry. No vote, so this ends our public hearing.
We have proposed ordinance number 2020-33. This is an ordinance for the city's civil city budget and tax levy for 2021.
There's no committee report.
No.
So this is, I'm sorry?
No, this is a public hearing, no vote.
This is the second reading on Proposed Ordinance 2020-33. Anyone in council chambers wishing to speak in favor of Proposed Ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, Dave Wood, Mayor. I also want to say hello to Mr. President on the line, as well as all the other council members here. President, it's great to be back with you. But anyway, I'm here tonight to speak in favor and urge your support of our civil city budget, Proposed Ordinance Number 2020-33. This 2021 civil city budget doesn't look too much different than the 2020 civil city budget that we're currently operating under. And I can't tell you how much of a, I think that's a good thing, given the fact that we are in the midst of one of the most difficult, turbulent years in our city's history. Our planning, our long-term planning, was that we knew that the fiscal cliff was coming. We've been planning for that for well over five years. Who would have thought that in 2020, we would see the convergence of the actual fiscal cliff impacting, starting to impact the city, then the unexpected pandemic all hitting in the same year? And who knows what's out there still remaining? But we have seen, whether it's neighbors here close, communities all around the state, that their budgets are between the fiscal cliff and the pandemic that's wreaking havoc on budgets. And so we're pretty pleased to say that that is not the case in the City of Mishawaka. Why is that? Why are we not in a situation where we have to make drastic cuts or not in a position to, say, give our staff members raises? It's because we've been planning for a long period of time, and we have a strategy that we stick to with your help, that our department managers have bought into, that our Controller's Office manages, and that our elected officials live by. And that strategy works. How do we know? Because now it's being tested in a big way. We get criticized for it from time to time. We're too conservative, too fiscally cautious, too fiscally conservative, especially during those seemingly prosperous years where other communities are giving bigger raises maybe or spending bigger amounts of dollars than we are. But this year, we don't have to make cuts. It's my number-one priority here at the City of Mishawaka, since I've been involved in this position as mayor and even before, that we're here to preserve our city services, those great city services that our citizens have come to depend on, rely on, and value, and that we value the people who deliver those services. And it's my top priority to, really to deliver those services and to value those people, to protect them with their job security, so that we don't have to make cuts, so that we can give them an honest wage, so that we can give them good benefits, and that they have a job long-term, as long as they want one here at the City of Mishawaka. And we've been able to do that. There's never not been a year where I have not given any kind of raise. Sometimes they're not as big as people want, but you can always typically expect it. Well, this year's budget, again, looks a lot like last year's budget. I can go over some of the highlights. You have met with every department manager. You know the differences between last budget and this, so I will save you the time of going through everything. Just touch on some highlights. Mr. Hayden, in his haste to leave, Jordan's, he missed out on some of the good news for him. We need more police cars. That's provided he can deliver the police cars we ordered last year, but we need more and more of those. So public safety, both police and fire, remains the biggest items in our budget, our largest expense in the civil city budget, and that's only right because that's our number-one priority, is public safety. We are also going to add a new IT person specifically for public safety if our budget passes. The time for that has come, and we think that having a dedicated person there solely for public safety and that their ever-increasing needs in technology, this is the right time to make that happen prior to our move. It also, this budget maintains our investment in our great, our quality city services that I mentioned earlier. It also gives those who deliver those services a modest raise. We always wish it could be more, but I am happy this year to be able to be in a position that we can do that. So we are proposing for our staff, which are non-collective bargaining, public safety, and park, that we give a 1.5% plus $500. And we think that that is very fair, given the situation we're in. There are troubles that still lurk ahead. While this year, we didn't see the, really, the big impact of our fiscal or pandemic on our budget, we know that that still is going to occur. We are seeing it right now in motor vehicle highway, and that will mean less roads paved starting, started this year and will run into the future. We're going to see our local option income taxes reduced, and predominantly in 2022 and less next year as well, but it looks like the big hit on those will be in 2022. But the good news is that while other communities and municipalities around the state and municipalities around the state have taken their local option income taxes and put salaries in them, that's why we don't have to make cuts this year, because we have not done that. We have not kind of bowed to that pressure to do that. We keep our salaries in our general fund. Why? Because the general fund is the most stable. It's the property tax-based fund. And so, by keeping them there, and that being the most stable, when times get difficult, local income taxes are very volatile, depending on pandemics, economic conditions. Well, this year, we're seeing that volatility in a big way. And we don't have people's livelihoods dependent on that volatility and those swings. And we think that's a very wise way to budget. And so, but, we are trying to shift expenses out of our general fund into local income taxes, just so that we can, you know, meet those troubles ahead. And I want to really call out and thank our Controller Becky Miller for the outstanding professional job that she does, not just with her budget, her whole team that come together, put this budget together, but just all throughout the year, and their monitoring of the budget, their diligence, and making sure that we stay in good financial shape and pass all of our audits and all of that. It's a huge job for a small little department that I am very, very proud of, and I'm sure you are too. But we also need to thank our department managers. This year, the orders were, we're not buying it if you're not, if you don't need it. And so, our department managers really took a look at their own departmental budgets, and they kept them very manageable, still able to provide the service, but no frills by any stretch of the imagination. And I certainly want to thank the council, our fiscal body, for the city, for your commitment of time and talent when it comes to putting this budget together. You met with every single department manager, spent hours going over really every line item of the budget, and that's a big commitment, so I want to thank you for that. With that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Provided I can, I also, Controller Miller here, who can answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? I don't have a question, but more of a comment. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, your staff, and specifically Ms. Miller and her staff as well. As always, they do a tremendous, outstanding job. I attended as many meetings as I could, and should be super proud as we are to have the department heads that we do have in place do a great job, very professional, very detailed, so please extend heartfelt thanks to them as well.
I will do that.
Yes, Mr. President?
Is there any comments?
Sure.
That's the new kid on the block with a long-term lifelong mission to Mishawaka. I want to thank you, your staff, all your department heads, and also all the council members that have been there prior to me joining it, Maggie joining it. When you go through the negotiations with your workers, if you feel like we are all family, it's kind of hard to hold that line and not give them the money. I think between the past mayors and the past council members that have sat up here, you guys have done a fantastic job. And being close to it now, I can see that I'm very thankful for that, because we can't survive a pandemic and the tight money right now. So, thank you to all my colleagues, and thank you to your staff and yourself.
Any questions or comments, Ms. Volker?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Always. I just want to agree, but one of the things that I always appreciate about going to the budget meetings is getting an opportunity to not only understand the budgets and what's going on, but also to just kind of get an update about what's going on with all the different departments, and get an opportunity to understand what concerns might be moving forward. And so, I always find it to be, from my standpoint, a really enjoyable process and hugely informational. So, and Becky, you did a really good job this year with highlighting the differences between last year's budget and this year's budget, and I really appreciate that, too. So, thanks.
We never pass up an opportunity to talk about our favorite subject, which is the Princess City.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Belalbette?
Yes, Mr. President. Mayor Dave, I'd like to say, you know, I want to thank you for running a tight ship for the last 10 years when I've been on the committee. And I think that, you know, certainly the council has tried to cooperate. And one of the things that I can say is, I've had a long career in HR, about 41 years. And in the course of that time, one of the hardest things that I could never get used to is having to reduce good performers when they're doing the job, and having to do that because of the economic situation. And I really appreciate the fact that, you know, as a city, we've been able to maintain our workforce in tough times, and hopefully, we'll be out of those tough times in the near future. But I appreciate the job that you've done in managing this city.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment for the mayor? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else in person in the council chambers wishing to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-33? Anyone participating remotely wish to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-33? Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-33? Anyone participating remotely wish to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-33? Any council members wishing to speak? Call for the question.
Question?
There's no vote.
No, there is a question.
I'm sorry. There's no vote this evening.
We have proposed ordinance 2020-34, an ordinance amending the salaries of all employees of the city of Mishawaka except Mishawaka Park Department, elected officials, and the Mishawaka Utilities for the city of Mishawaka, Indiana for the year beginning January 1, 2021. This is the city employee salary ordinance for 2021.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Your Committee on Budget and Finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2020-34, report that they have examined such matter, said matter, and that in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the majority of the committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you please pull the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonball?
Yes.
I mean, the report passes nine to zero.
This is second reading on proposed ordinance 2020-34. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. President, council members, Dave Wood, Mayor, here to urge you to support proposed ordinance number 2020-34, which is our salary increase for non-collective bargaining, public safety, park, and staff members. As I mentioned earlier, we are proposing a 1.5% raise plus $500. That is, we think, given the current conditions out there, both in the economy and with the pandemic, and with the fiscal cliff, something that we can sustain. And so, I would urge your support of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Remus.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the 500 goes on the base, so it's not at one time?
Yes. So, the thought being is that the 1.5%, the percent, benefits maybe some of our staff members at the higher end of the pay scale. The cash amount benefits those at the lower end of the pay scale. And so, it's just been a nice way where we can recognize our staff members and some of the departments that do an outstanding job of, say, keeping the city clean over at Central Services, neat and plowed. And so, it benefits them. And so, that's why we do the percentage plus the cash.
Thank you. I assume that's what it was. Just for clarification, everybody is on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Remus. Any other questions?
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Hicksonball.
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize if the technology is a little bit clunky and you're having trouble hearing me, but I want to echo the earlier comments. I appreciate the work that you and the Controller and the department heads have done, not just with regard to the salary ordinance, but the budget, to make sure that we are able to provide an increase to our staff this year. So, thank you for that work and for the time that you and the Controller spent with us in the budget hearings. You know, my recollection is that there is a short list of positions that are being treated as an exception to the general salary increase that you've mentioned. Would it be possible, just for, you know, clarification and the record, for either you or the Controller to highlight those positions that will receive a different increase over and above the percent and a half of $500 for 2021?
Let me go to my list. So, well, we are, we're creating a new position. That would be the IT technical position that I spoke of specifically for police and fire. We are doing an increase of, a greater increase for the administrative assistant over there at the fire department. That'll bring her in line with what's happening over at the police department. My own assistant will be higher than that, and I believe that she has earned that. When you look at all of our cities around us, there are several employees in the mayor's office, from chiefs of staff all the way down to media people. I have none of those. However, my assistant does an outstanding job of not only running the office, but trying, you know, keeping up with me and making sure that my world goes more smoothly. It is not, you know, an eight-to-five job. It is a 24/7, 365 job. It is different than every single other job in the city. And so, I'm asking that we create a new position called Executive, Mayor's Executive Assistant. It will therefore make her position unique to the city, which it is, rather than your typical executive, or your typical office manager or assistant in, like we have in other departments. We have eliminated some positions and some part-time work as well. And, oh, what else are, is there? We have, trying to go down my list. We're creating an assistant HR manager over in the HR office. That will carry a different, really raise, or a different pay scale than what we have there currently. And am I missing any? Yes. So, much like we have in certain departments, we do give, say, a stipend or a specialty pay, if you will, for those who really accomplish certain certifications through maybe education. These certifications then benefit them in the performance of their job. And so, in Clerk's office, we're doing those right now to really honor some of the certifications and the expertise that they do and are required to have continuing education to maintain those certifications. So, we will be giving some, like I said, calling them out and giving them benefit for those certifications.
Well, I appreciate that information. I would have been shocked if you didn't have that list at your disposal on your iPad there. So, thank you for sharing that, and I certainly support all of those exceptions, if you will, that you highlighted. I will say that when the time is right, once we, you know, get past the net effect of the fiscal cliff and the pandemic, my hope would be that we could look at our salaries and our salary ordinance in a comprehensive fashion, and try to recognize some of the other positions that are worthy of some of the above-the-scale raises that we've approved the last couple of years here. But clearly, now is not the time with the net impact of both the pandemic and the fiscal cliff. So, I appreciate your effort to recognize those positions and look forward to us perhaps being able to do more of that more comprehensively when the time is right. But thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Mr. Hicksonball, any other questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the council chambers that wish to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-34? Anyone participating remotely wish to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-34? Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-34? Anyone participating remotely wish to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-34? Are there any council members wishing to speak?
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. Real briefly, as we lawyers like to say, I just would like the record to reflect the fact that the passage of this ordinance tonight is subject to our ongoing negotiations with our public safety employees and other collective bark groups, other groups that we bargain with as a city, and that as those negotiations are concluded, then an amendment would be appropriate to this to reflect the outcome of those negotiations. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that great reminder. Any other council members wish to speak? I'll call for the question.
Question?
Madam Clerk, will you please pull the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonball?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine to zero.
Next is the privilege of the floor. This is the portion of the meeting that members of the public are welcome and invited to come forward and speak on non-agenda items. I'll start with anyone in person in the council chambers. Anyone wish to speak on the privilege of the floor, if you could, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hodge Patel, 103 South Esther Street, South Fenn. I want to, Mr. Vice President, just want to compliment the Mishawaka Police Department. I would have been here sooner for this. Over at your last meeting, I had a family commitment that prevented me from being here. So, my car was parked on the 300 block of West Mishawaka Avenue, and there was a gentleman, a 22-year-old individual, driving a vehicle that was not his, according to police here in Mishawaka, who did an outstanding job, from my perspective, was driving someone else's car, uninsured, slammed into the back end of my car, totaled my car. The rear driver's side, just the impact of it, collapsed the back tire of the vehicle, popped the spring, pushed the car up onto the curb. Fortunately, we were not in the vehicle when this happened. In addition to that, there were, according to Sergeant Long, one of the officers that was there that I had the chance to speak with after, words, that there were some students, probably, I think he said middle-school-age students that were there that witnessed it. Unfortunately, you know, this reckless driver didn't injure anybody. So, what he ended up doing was, he hit the back end of my car, ricocheted, went around my car, jumped up the curb, took out a sign, sideswiped a tree, and then went back into the roadway. So, a couple of things here. Police officers responded within two minutes to this. Police officers responded within two minutes to this serious accident. Not only that, they were able to, let me recognize the officers. It's Officer Patel, Officer Minor, and then Sergeant Long, who are the three officers, according, you know, to the report. Again, I wasn't physically there when this happened. The officers put a business card with the report number on my vehicle, which I appreciated. I was able to make it to the vehicle that evening, probably around 9:30 at night or something like that. And I left a message with Sergeant Long on the phone. And this really goes to what the mayor talked about, about the importance of public safety. You know, they're there whether, 24/7, whether, you know, regardless of what the situation is. I wasn't there, but they handled it exceptionally well. And so, I want to compliment them on that. So, I called him that night, Sergeant Long, and I left a voicemail message, and I knew, I was like, there's no way I'll get a call back. And I didn't need a call back right away. And it was just basically, you know, I need your insurance information. He called me back probably within about three to five minutes of me leaving that voicemail message, which really says something about the law enforcement officers that we have here in this community. And I've told everybody, like, that I've talked to him, like, oh, my gosh, the officer called me back, you know, at 10 o'clock at night, and it wasn't even an emergency situation. We also had a couple of email exchanges just on communication of when that car would be towed, and I think I was able to, the next morning, to get that car removed. So, my compliments to the Mishawaka Police Department and everybody in the city who responded to that situation. I'm sure they do it countless times a day and throughout the year. And I just want to recognize the work that they did on that particular, and I, on behalf of me and my family, and of course, the citizens of Mishawaka. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel, and I'm grateful that nobody was seriously injured, and thank you for coming and speaking. High regards to those three officers, Long, Patel, and Minor, which are just only three of the outstanding officers that we have, and serve and protect our community. So, it's great to hear that, great feedback in special times like this when police members need as much positive influence and feedback as we can give themselves. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Mr. Patel? Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to take advantage of the privilege of the floor that is here in the council chambers? Anyone wishing to speak remotely on privilege of the floor? Seen none? We'll close. Any unfinished business? Seen none? Any new business? Also seen none? If there's no further business to come before the council, then a motion to adjourn is in order.
I'm moved.
Moved.